God. Okay.
Yeah, he's gonna, he should be able to go on. We're just waiting for our fourth member. Are we?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Katula? Mr. Kozlitz?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher? Mr. Sefner? Ms. Shields?
Here.
And Dr. Burks.
Okay. Alright, so uh, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How is?
Cultivating learners who apply skills and experiences from society.
That's excellent. Okay, so well, if there are any questions at present, so we will go right to committee report. And I think the two items that we discussed in committee are basically on this agenda, so that shouldn't be a problem. And Tom, you have anything?
No.
Okay, I don't think the other, we've been as a committee at all, so. Alright, so now we need to go to the consent agenda. Yes, there's two left to read, Tom.
I'm not really having to read. Approve the minutes of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty Board of Education meeting, December fourteenth, twenty twenty Emergency Day. E-learning plans, public hearing, December fourteenth, twenty twenty Executive Session, January eleventh, twenty twenty Committee Meeting, January eleventh, twenty twenty one Executive Committee Session Meeting. The Activities Funding Report for December twenty twenty, the final bills and claims for December twenty twenty in the amount of nine million, three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, thirty-two cents. And the bills and claims for January twenty twenty one in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Foyer request received December fifteenth, twenty twenty and responded to on December fifteenth, twenty twenty from Kazaran at the local requesting elected boards and officials' name, term, and date. Salary and email and destiny and destroy the February twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen Executive Session recording.
Hope you sent over salaries.
Yeah.
Hope you sent over salaries. So um.
I deserve the interview.
Yeah. So, does anybody that's online want to make a motion to approve this?
Second. I made a motion.
Okay.
Wait a second.
Who's second? I can say.
Yeah.
Alright, motion made seconded. All in favor, give your roll call.
Hi.
Mr. Kozlitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Thank you all. Alright, so moving forward, this is kind of a big piece here. We have treasurer's report, so maybe would you like to start off with it?
Sure. Stan. Um, December report. Good news to report as we've had so far on the year-to-date basis. We would generally expect to be in about the fifty percent range for both revenues and expenses. From a revenue perspective, we're at ninety-nine point oh eight percent, so we're slightly above. And that's primarily driven by very successful levy collections. So this year, which we thought might be a tough year, we're collected at a ninety-nine point seven six percent rate, which is very consistent with prior years. So that's really good news. We're well over fifty percent of the way there, and the second half collections will be more, obviously, as the levy increases in the second half of the year. We have also seen strong um transition fees and uh, you know, kind of generally across the board. Uh, from a Dr. Brenner perspective, we are current on state payments, so we've received two payments to date. We have conservatively budgeted three. I have been on numerous kind of calls with some of my peers, and people believe, I think, that there will be at least three payments. Uh, but obviously, we never know what might happen um with the state, especially as we see federal dollars come in. There's some thought that when you look at the state budget, that there may be some kind of offset there, so we'll continue to monitor that. I'm on um, you know, advisory committees and other things, so we'll continue to keep the board up to date as we learn uh more about that area. Uh, from an expense standpoint, uh, we're below uh kind of the fifty percent. Uh, very strong results on salaries. We're at uh forty-eight percent there. Uh, benefits, also seeing um some favorability, and that's related primarily to our health insurance fund that we take a look at every month. So in December of twenty twenty, we actually had a six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar year-to-date surplus in that fund. Uh, last year at this time, we had about a twenty-two thousand dollar surplus. So we've continued to see lower um than expected claims, you know, partially related to COVID, so they have been going up some. Um, and we would continue to expect to see those to accelerate, but we'll continue to monitor that. And as a reminder, those funds and any surplus in that fund can only be used to pay claims. So, you know, when we're looking at kind of a total fund balance, we need to make sure that we kind of segregate that, because those are truly restricted um restricted funds. Um, but other than that, we also are seeing favorability in transportation. Uh, clearly, we haven't had uh transportation for sports, for extracurriculars, and certainly, we've seen a lower-than-expected expense for out-of-district uh transportation for some of those students who are headstatefully remote. Um, so we haven't necessarily had to uh send all of those buses. The in-district transportation's been pretty similar to what we would expect, so we're running about the same number of buses. They're just slightly less full. So um, all in all, I think really good news to uh to report. We did have thirty-seven thousand five hundred of transition fees not related to grand reserves, so those continue to uh to come in strong. So, are there any other? Oh, one other thing. A big thanks to Mike Vargas. He's developed uh what we're kind of calling our quarterly budget reports, uh which are not part of this treasurer's report, but eventually will kind of feed into that. So we've been meeting with all of the uh cabinet members, all of the principals on their results year-to-date, seeing where they're spending, seeing if they've got other projects they want to invest in. And so that's really going to help us as we move towards the end of the year to be able to more accurately project uh where we're going to end the year. And I spoke with Tom earlier today, too. We are looking at um continuing to enhance reporting. And so leveraging Forecast Five, leveraging some of the work that Mike Vargas has done, but to provide some more visuals and some things that may make it um even easier for the board or anyone else to, you know, fully understand the the uh our financial condition. So I don't know if there's any other questions?
No, pretty good position to be in right now, so.
Yeah, and I guess the one only other thing I'll say is, right now, none of those revenues include um some of that federal money. So Mike is working on kind of those submissions, so we will expect to see um some of those funds come in towards the back half of the year. And for some of the supplemental funding, um if we don't need it this year, we're not, you know, we don't necessarily need to be aggressive with that. Uh, but we'll continue to kind of revise. We don't have, we've seen a couple different numbers for the supplemental cares uh funding, so I think we kind of want to wait until that, you know, settles settles down. But um, again, that's money that could be used this year or could be used um in the future if if we choose to do that.
Is there, what's the restriction on those funds?
Um, it depends. I mean, there's there's a couple of different funds that we have, so some of the cares funding and the supplemental funding doesn't have a whole lot of restrictions. Some of the funding, we have a digital divide grant that uh Mike's actually been working on with Ryan, so that's restricted to, you know, uh hotspots, devices, things to, you know, improve access to um, you know, electronics. But for most of the rest, there's not necessarily a whole lot of restrictions. There's one um grant that we're going to apply for, and it probably would be fairly small. Um, it's fairly limited, but that's not anything that we've included in our numbers. That would just be extra money. So sometimes they allow for PPE, sometimes they don't. Um, but generally, it's pretty wide open, as long as it's something that, you know, contributed to us being able to open schools, and um they they do allow a lot of flexibility.
Great.
So the motion approved treasurer's course presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, let's, first we get a few reports, huh?
Yeah.
Now the personnel.
Uh, the first item that we have here, we have um, as stated in the report, we have ten families with third-grade children that want to bring them back face-to-face. So we're asking to be able to post a position and hire one point oh uh third-grade teacher uh at Bristol Bay.
Motion approved personnel resignation is presented.
Second.
Motion is made seconded, so we uh.
Mr. Kozlitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Great, yes, it was good news. Alright. So we have a motion for resignations.
Motion approved resignation is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, any calls? What should be answered? Alright, we did remove all the hires.
Motion to approve the hires is presented.
Second. Oh, so.
You're the one who's all new.
Yeah.
Alright, so motion is made seconded. Will you roll call?
Mr. Kozlitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
And Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Passes. Only got two. Our innovation manager provided our private manager, and this is something we discussed in the late in committee last night and before that. So we need to uh, well, let's get the motion on the table.
Motion to approve the innovation that brought the manager back to the set.
The second?
Second.
Good, alright, um, so at this point, there's no money to get.
There's not, and as I looked at job description or other positions like this, based upon experience, there's one all over the board. It could be fifty-five, seventy thousand dollar position, it could be a hundred thousand dollar position, just depends on experience certification of the candidate. So that'd be something that I'll communicate back with the board as we put the post out there and start getting the applicants for it, and kind of see where things are falling. Uh, but I'll keep it more, obviously, updated.
Okay, so this is going to just approve the job description, so we're not really involved, but I felt the reading would be a roll call on this. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, yes, keep looking. Alright. So, Dr. Brenner. Oh, this is a lot of stuff. Okay, so some of the stuff we've got to see before, and so let's let's go to maybe some of the uh, some of the breakdown you did from the last night, because that's all we can actually get for, and you need to go a little deeper, and then we can start with the after deal.
So. Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I do have a presentation, and so for those that are attending on line, I will share my screen. And get into presentation mode. Um, this academic report summarizes key assessments for students that are in first through eighth grade. The NWA Math Assessment with the National Norm Assessment, and the PSAT is also a National Norm Assessment that are eighth-grade students. So our students in first through eighth grade took the math, and the students that are in eighth grade took the uh PSAT. The presentation that I have here tonight speaks to the data achievement at a very high level. And there's also additional information available for the board that summarizes student achievement by building, by grade level, and by core work at all levels. I've selected some key indicators and some key points um for us to discuss tonight, but we'll not go into depth or detail for all of the items that are provided in the report. I also, I think it's noteworthy that the board understands that we're working on a way to extract data from our system that provides us with more specific analytics, so we can evaluate different programs, different course sequences, um and different resources um to determine whether or not they are having some type of statistical significant impact on student achievement. And so those um are still in the works. Um, but today uh is the National Norm Assessment. I'll start with the math math assessment, which we give to students um in grades one through eight. To determine proficiency, we use the Elway Assessment of Readiness-Equated Benchmark that gives us predictive measures to get a sense of student future performance on these items. And so um in the past, this has been used, the IAR and the PSAT, to, by the Elway State Board of Education, to determine a district and a school ranking on a report. This first graph shows the all learning models together, so the hybrid e-learning and the full-day students. And basically, it is student achievement performance for the same test that was taken in the fall, so in September, and also in December as well. And you can see as this, these charts represent, um that every grade level, with the exception of grade one, increased the percentage of students, meaning that Elway Assessment of Readiness-Equated depends more on this assessment. I I will note that first grade um is the most volatile. This is an adaptive assessment, and so our students in first grade are still learning how to navigate a long testing system. They have a lot of practice with assessment. And so we do see more variance historically in first grade than in the other grades. Uh, the next chart is a different look at the same set of achievement data. Uh, we use a data consulting firm called Petro that provides us with annual projections based on last year's um student performance. And in this graph, it indicates that in math, students in grades one, three, six, seven, and eight outperform the projections, um which considering everything that's happened during pandemic, was a tremendous accomplishment. Um, students in grades two and five are within a point of that projection, and students in grades four were seven percent below that projection. Um, in the backup data and information, we also have cohort data as well, um which indicates that all accounts that are focus areas are in grades four and five in math. We saw a decline in student achievement by cohort and also from past levels of experience. The next chart, which is very interesting, we broke this down by the learning model. And so in this, it indicates um students that achieved the proficiency benchmark in e-learning, that participated in the hybrid model or the full-day model. And it indicated that full-time students have the highest percentage of student mean benchmarking in grades three, five, and six, hybrid students in four, seven, and eight, and e-learning students have the highest percentage of student mean benchmarking in grades one or two. Um, one thing to consider is when we provided this assessment to our e-learning students for math, they were allowed to take it at home. So there's really no way to determine the level of parent support at the primary levels for our six, seven, uh and eight-year-olds, so that data um should be taken with a grain, so we don't know how much help, comment, data we're providing at home, um which could explain some of the levels. We also have uh with us the district math demographic data for grades one through eight. Um, this is a summary uh chart here, um but this does indicate that black, Hispanic, Golden, and LEP students that have IET, there still isn't a significant achievement gap that we're very, very concerned about. Um, but on the positive side, the black IET and LEP students have increased the percentage of students that have math proficiency uh over the course of the last few years. And so while they are increasing their level of efficiency, it's still not enough to close that achievement gap, uh but it is trending in the positive direction. The the next four side, four slides are the same set of data, the same set of data, um but from the ELA perspective. And so this is the fall to the winter achievement on the same National Norm and Test, and every grade level, with the exception of grade one and eight, increased the percentage of students that were meeting that proficiency benchmark. I did have the opportunity to meet with the eighth-grade team after this data was was released, and they are very focused, unintentional about increasing the level of test complexity um for their students. And so I I hope to see the fruits of their labor and efforts on the next time we provide this assessment. Uh, this slide here shows the winter ELA projections versus actuals, and we had students in grade one, three, four, and six meet those projections or exceed them, and students in grades two, five, seven, and eight did not meet. However, the decline in those percentages versus the projections was not um terribly drastic. Uh, we have some that decreased maybe three percent over the fifth grade, um or three percent in seventh grade as well. So the ELA data by um the the learning model does not indicate uh at at this level that one learning model is more effective than another, in the contemporary reading. So we have hybrid students that have the highest levels of achievement in grades four, six, and eight, and full-time students in grades six and seven, and e-learning students have the highest levels of achievement uh in grades one, two, three, and five. And you know, at the Teaching and Learning Department, we were discussing and hypothesizing that the percentage of students that are meeting this proficiency benchmark is much higher than math. And and because um this adaptive test, students can use uh re- reasoning skills in order to come to a conclusion and in reading much easier than they can use reasoning skills in math if they have a little bit of thought. And so for example, uh if the student was not provided a geometry lesson, it would be very difficult for them to reason through a geometry question if they hasn't had an instruction previously. In ELA, students, that curriculum builds on itself, so year after year, if we're talking about a united characterization, they might be able to use their reasoning skills in order to achieve at a higher level, even if they haven't had an explicit instruction at that school year. even if they haven't had an explicit instruction at school here. Uh, this slide indicates the ELA demographic, uh, data. It reveals that there are, again, significant achievement gaps to black, Hispanic, limited, uh, English proficient students and students with IETs. Um, it is also, um, considered a positive, or we haven't seen a decline, uh, in these, in these subgroups, particularly due to the circumstances of the pandemic. Um, but in this, additionally, all of the black, Hispanic, LEP, and IET have all improved efficiency since the 2018 administration of this assessment. Uh, the next assessment is the PSAT date, and this was given in November for our eighth grade students. This is a different administration date than in years past. In years past, we had given this assessment, uh, in the springtime, the spring testing window. And so we had the same benchmark levels, but the test was given four months earlier, which could explain some of the difference in student achievement, um, as we see here. This is, this chart represents the percentage of students that met that college board equated benchmark. Um, that for eighth grade, that benchmark score is four thirty for math and a three ninety for evidence-based reading and writing. The achievement scores on the PSAT fall anywhere from a scale of three twenty to five twenty. So that'll give you an idea of the percentage of students that have met, um, that college board benchmarks score um, in English language version now. The section here on the left-hand side that says total, that's the total percentage of students that met both benchmarks. They met math and the evidence-based reading and writing. And so you can see there, we had thirty percent of our students met both benchmarks, forty percent of students met math, and seventy-two percent met that evidence-based reading and writing. Uh, but again, this assessment was administered four months earlier than previous year. Uh, this is a demographic breakdown. It, it reveals that Hispanic white students performed at similar levels, uh, on this evidence-based reading and writing assessment. And there is an achievement gap that exists, that exists between the African-American subgroup and the other identified subgroups. Um, but all subgroups experienced a decrease, uh, in student achievement from, um, the 2019 administration to the 2020 administration of this. Uh, this is the same, uh, detailed information from the math assessment and evidence-based reading and writing. Uh, as you can see, we've had some significant decreases in math, uh, on student achievement, uh, and performance from the 2019 to the 2020, uh, administration of this assessment in all demographic areas. And if there is a, um, a bar graph on the chart that's white, it just means that in that particular testing year, we didn't have enough students to, to make up a sub. And so this is student performance, this year's student performance in the November administration, uh, that is broken down by modality. Uh, you can see here that, uh, the, in math, um, the hybrid and full-day students were, um, very close to proficiency levels. Um, and in, um, the evidence-based reading and writing with ERW, um, our highest achieving group was the hybrid students and, um, the e-learning students. Uh, one thing to, to note in this particular dataset, when we're talking about, um, e-learning students, the college board admitted that this assessment had to be taken on campus, but not like the math assessment where we allow families to take the assessment at home. Um, a hundred percent, nearly a hundred percent of the students in hybrid and full day participated in the assessment, while fifty-one percent of the students enrolled in e-learning participated in the assessment. So it's not a complete population when we're looking at the e-learning.
Now, can this chart with the hybrid students?
Yes.
Don't we just have a handful of hybrid kids in the Johnson area that are not in person? When we talk middle school, eighth grade, hybrid, my large, the vast majority are in person from the core of the threat.
Absolutely, yes, so.
So when you look at the, the data, hybrid versus full day, the core of the instruction for all of those kids is primarily in person.
It's primarily in person, in, in the same class, um, and it's the same amount of instructional minutes, yes. Uh, we do have two, two hybrid options for families. Uh, as a reminder to the board, in the middle school, students can come to class for their core classes, which is the majority of our kids, over ninety-five, maybe ninety-eight percent of the kids are in person in the same class as our students that are, um, in the full-day program. Or students could have, or families could have a hybrid option that is remote for the core and electives on campus, but we don't have very many students that take advantage of that opportunity. Uh, the additional thing, just a note, uh, for the board is that I have provided and developed a calendar that gives the board a timeline of the academic reporting, um, throughout the academic year. I ended up, um, attaching that in public view, which you can take a look at, and that'll give you a sense of um, when certain achievement reports will come back to the board and what's more. So open up for any discussion or questions that you may have.
Yeah, um, so this is, uh, pretty much a student review report, right? So we're looking at the results related to student performance. So there's two sides to this, so I'm gonna try to say this is not east, because I get lost in this chart. So, we have the, these groups. Those, we have several classes within each of those groups, so there's like ten classroom students. Whatever, whatever modality it may be. And, and the data that is blended with all those, all those groups together, all those classes together. So, and correcting one, but I would think that there's probably some variety of performance within the class that could be significant, but this is a negative again for sure. Yeah.
You mean between teachers?
Between teachers or classroom?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, so when, when we look at that, we, I, I know we have our teachers on special assignment, that we try to transfer best practices among classes. But I'm just wondering how we actually track teacher performance based on those practices that we're trying to disseminate. So what, what I think we'd like to see, so I, I know you'll have teachers today, you'll have education, and, uh, then further education classes they can take, the, the skills, which is what we need, that's commendable. But what you have is data. So, so how, how is that particular teacher in this case, you know, evaluated on the new performance standards that, that they're trying to implement in their own classrooms? So how do we, how do we decide, have we been successful in, in educating, uh, our teacher in some of the, the, the standards that we know work well within each of these modalities? And that's a lot of data, and you alluded to that when we started this. Um, but I gotta think, we, we need to look at both sides of the coin, right? So we have one side, which a lot of data on student performance, but it's not particularly, it's not as clear, obviously, our teacher performance, which I realize may be a little bit difficult since you've got a lot of C and S testing for that. But we need to come up with some kind of a, a format that belongs for that. So, uh, because I, I think part of our problem, I would think, is that we're not always sure just how well we, we've succeeded. And, you know, if we go back to our, some of our technical skill that we had wanted disseminated previously, kind of found out later that they hadn't been. So, uh, if we could, yes, and that, yes, we've given all that data, lost all that data, immediately, that would be possible. But what's your framework for that? How, how do you think we could accomplish that? And, and I think you're already, you must be thinking in that direction, because we've already mentioned that.
Yes, we are. Uh, it's a good question, and there's a couple of things that we have, uh, currently, and there's some things that we need to do, uh, moving forward. So currently, the consulting firm AppRap does provide us with, um, teacher reports that have growth metrics. So how did their particular cohort of students grow from one testing point to the next? And also achievement metrics that our administrators, uh, have available for them, and they review when those data points, uh, do come out. Um, from the standpoint of specific target and teaching strategies, that's typically handled through our evaluation process. And, and so an administrator, when they're evaluating a teacher, whether it's tenure or it's non-tenure, um, they would focus on, uh, development of specific teaching strategy or, uh, perceived period of, um, proficiency, or perhaps, uh, an area that the teacher is just interested in growing. Perhaps it's formative assessment of the teaching practice, or, um, higher-order questioning skills as a teaching practice. And through that coaching cycle, uh, then they would then monitor the progress of the teachers at all occasions of that particular.
How frequently do we do that?
How frequently? Well, it's a good question. So, uh, teachers that are tenured are, are evaluated, uh, by, by a formal evaluation process, which by that, I mean, they're actually administered, observing their instructional practice, uh, every two years. A non-tenure teacher, uh, is evaluated every year until they earn that tenure status. And so I, I would say, from the standardization of practice, I think it's something we can get a little bit better at. And from, from the area, we're gonna focus on one particular instructional strategy. And we believe that it is the instructional strategy that is going to increase student performance and, and growth. Um, we don't have a system in which we explicitly target that one instructional practice.
Yeah, well, especially when we have multiple modalities, right? So, and, and some of them are due to some of the instructors. It, it would seem to me that, and, and I, I know what you're talking is the classic way it's been done for decades. And I know, uh, probably years.
Yes.
So it, 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 in, in the real world, I don't believe that you can evaluate somebody on that level. It used to be medicine, in fact, the tool probably could pick you up, is that when you went to be board assessed, that, that was every so many years, three years, five years, whatever it was. And now the new models are, it's all the time. You know, you're, you have different classes regularly, every quarter, you're being assessed. So, it, it, you know, there's just so much to learn, there's so much data, and, and so two-year cycle doesn't allow. For it, plus the fact, you know, I, I wanna be sure that the evaluators are really looking at the right things, right? So that seems to me that's a, it's a weak point, and you point out that it is, uh, that we need to make sure that, well, we're trying to get across, getting across and being disseminated correctly.
So, I think we also, in the, linking out this year, that I think moving forward in collaboration with our YEA, uh, we need to take a look at our evaluation process, our instruments, our tools. Um, you know, is there, are the things that we can do where it's more reflective in nature? It's more targeted, more personalized? We, we have an instructional model that's been created, and that goes back to what you're talking about, where then it's taking those skill sets you see, or deficiencies in kids, and, and then going back to instructional practices and saying, how can we support our teachers to grow based upon the outcomes of student achievement? Or based upon the personalized skill set that our teachers need to grow, whatever that is, or their expertise? Um, but I think part of it is, we just, we need to re, revisit our entire tool and our process to make it something that, it's about growth, it's about collaboration, it's about, you know, doing, you know, you know, teach around like, like medical field does, and, um, and then it's, it's seen as that as well.
Right, it's a positive experience.
Yeah, and, and absolutely, and, and that's really, I think, the greatest thing. It doesn't always happen that way. But I, I, I think it would be welcomed by many of our staff, um, certainly by our administrative, and, um, and not seen as just something we do to comply with the state. I don't believe it's always like that. I certainly, there's dialogue in our, in our, in the process that we have. Um, it is, you know, there's, there's meaningful dialogue that happens, there's meaningful work that's going on with our teachers through the diagnosis process. But it, it does need an overhaul, it does need to be improved on.
Right, so I think that's the one, right? So, does it take a look at a newer model that's more reactive and it's faster? Uh, and it addresses the issues that you have on a, you know, multiple basis in the case. Especially between modalities, because not, not every modality is going to have the same best practice, right? So they're gonna be different. So, uh, uh, if you could, I just kinda outlined that for us where you're going here, that, uh, that I think that would help, you know, because we've talked about evaluation processes by the board. And, and most of them are driven by state law. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think that the state is quite up to speed on what really needs to be done. I agree with you, Dr. Schump, yeah, and this should be a part of the process. Um, and then it should only be looked at as the growth. Obviously, if, if there are problems, the resolution of the problems always evolve. And, and, uh, I am sure that, that almost every single teacher wants to always do his best job possible. So if we look at it that light, and we have a mechanism that there can be a real action that occurs, um, I think that's all we could ask for. So, we'll just, you know, I, I look at the reporting timeline, you know, I don't know where you would put that, uh, information. Maybe you could think about that before the next meeting, and give us a timeline, and when you think you'd be out, at least something you're gonna present to the YEA. Yes, if, uh, because I don't think it's a contraction issue. It, it, you know, it, it is, but, I mean, it, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things we could do before a contract is allowed for everybody to agree that this is a positive. So, so that time around, maybe we can look at the, the teacher side of it, as well as, you know, student enrollment success, not necessarily. But just as important, that we're giving every opportunity to our teachers to create a higher level of teacher availability.
Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to build separate report and present on file. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. They both?
Okay.
Word policy introduction.
Alright. This is usually the one they answer. Did we, oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yep, multi-year projections first, so I'm Indian.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, um, the board members in the room, they have a, a copy of the document that I have, assuming. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so it might be a little bit easier to look at out of your packet. What you're looking at is our overall five-year projection model that comes out of our, you know, I guess, uh, software that we have. And, uh, right now, you're looking at the operating funds. And then we also have a similar model for our total funds. Uh, the incremental funds that are included in total, but not in operating are our capital fund, our debt service fund, and our health life safety fund. So gonna head and focus on the operating funds as our starting point. And if you take a look at those numbers, what you will see is that as of now, we are projecting a surplus across all five years. And that surplus ranges from about one point five million in FY22, um, up to about two million in the future years. What we're gonna talk through right now are some of the key assumptions that underlie that, uh, model. But a couple of things, I think, that I, that I wanna say to begin with, this one, this is kind of one of my responsibilities that I take most seriously in the district, in terms of fiscal responsibility and making sure that we're making good decisions, not only for today, but for the future. So, um, we spent a lot of time on the share, probably more with COVID and everything else, working on this. And again, trying to make this a living, breathing, um, good document. And what this'll do then will be kind of the foundation for our FY22 budget. So, uh, as we keep massaging this, rather than this being a once-a-year exercise that we do, just to kind of place on file, we're really making this an ongoing document that we continue to tweak as we get more information and actually see from some of the open items that we have, um, in the future. But in terms of some of the key assumptions, um, typically, obviously, the levy is one of the most important, uh, pieces of this document. So what we did is we took a look at kind of three to five-year, um, So what we did is we took a look at kind of three to five-year rates for some of those things. So whether that be CPI, whether that be EAB increases, whether that be new construction. And then that's typically kind of what we used for those assumptions. One good piece of news that I guess I want to share is that the final CPI for 123120 was 1.4%. So that, while that extremely high is much higher than we get anticipated. For a while during this past year, we thought it would be negative potentially or maybe zero. So 1.4% is certainly good news because that will impact the levy, our upcoming levy. So that's good news. For future years, we've raised that percentage 2%, which is pretty consistent with all our three-year and five-year historical levels of CPI. And again, for some of those other key components, we did write about $15 million in new construction and wrote about 2.5% increase in EAB, which again are pretty consistent with historical, with historical levels. In terms of some of our other, some of our other key assumptions. Right now, we're keeping EBS, our state funding, flat. Again, that one could change dramatically, could go up, could go down. As you guys know, we have been getting additional funding there in the 300,000 dollar range. And then this past year, this whole flat. So again, some of these things will eventually kind of come together. And we've also kind of kept our other state categorical funding flat at this point. Again, until we more know what that's going to look like. And as we get more information, we'll continue to change, we'll continue to change those assumptions. From an expense standpoint, honestly, the most significant expense is salaries. So for right now, we have a 2% increase in there. Again, that right now is just to be consistent with our assumption on the levy side. So we're trying to kind of keep our current assumptions consistent. And then we'll change those as we have more information because we will be negotiating our contract. Our current contract goes to the end of FY22. So the FY, the 2022 column are known, those are the increases for the contract and then their projection for the future years. For transportation, we know what our rate increases, we have just gone to bid for that. So we have included the rate increase from a volume perspective. We don't know what that'll be yet because we don't know what the models could look like when we go back to fall. So once our lazy transition teams are kind of doing their work and we have a better sense, then we'll be able to work with that trend and kind of identify what we think those possibilities. Food service similarly, right now, we've just been flat tended to this year because again, that's going to be highly dependent on what school looks like in the fall. And then obviously food service will follow that. From a technology perspective, we worked really hard, Ryan, over here, on what our replacement cycle looks like for technology. So those are actual numbers based on kind of our existing leases and future leases as we replace our Chromebooks for our students and replace our laptops for our, for our staff and teachers. From a capital investment perspective, we have included $750,000 in capital. That's the number we've used the past couple of years. That's again, a number we're doing work with DLR, on Evolution 115. And we've got the money that we got from our 2020 working cash flow. And so as we decide what that's going to look like, those numbers, those numbers will change. And we have also included again, from a consistency perspective, 2% general inflation increase. So for any non-salary or non-transportation expenses, we've included a general 2% increase. That any of those, any of these assumptions can be easily changed in the model as we get better, as we get better information. So, and I went through that quickly, those are a couple of the key assumptions. Does anybody have questions on those before we talk a little bit about open items?
Just one question. So salaries obviously are in the zone at this point. And it's 1% or what's all budget salaries?
It's like 60 plus percent.
Right. So I think the other, it's 40%. What do you feel will be the total growth over the next five years?
Well, I mean, part of that depends. So we, we put in kind of again, put in the percentage. But I mean, what I will say, because salaries are such a big expense, that I did do a whole derm modeling behind the scenes. And like a 1% change in salaries by year five, we would no longer have a balanced budget. So to give you kind of a frame of reference, because obviously a change in your salary is a cumulative change. It's not necessarily a one-year change. So and for any of these items, as we go forward, we can perform kind of sensitivity analysis to say, hopefully changed our assumption on, you know, CPI by a half a percent. This is what that might, you know, this is what that might be worth. But I did do it on salaries. That was a big, that was a big number. So in the short term, year one, it's just under $100,000 impact. But by the time you're out five years, it's almost a $2 million impact for that specific year. Because again, it is, it's just like the levy, it's cumulative. You know, the revenue side, obviously salaries are cumulative on the, on the expense side.
No, Bob, I think one of the things that, you know, when you never talk me about it, that is just a very fluid document. Means that, you know, we can, we change regularly based upon the knowledge we get, what we, we ascertain.
Right, right. Well, as you were saying, you know, it's something you're looking at on a regular basis. Because, you know, it's wonderful that we, you know, we have much more of the circles than we thought we'd ever have. We thought we'd be much more, that's for sure. But on the flip side, there's a kind of trip that we often, that is related to that. And we have to realize that it's still a fine line that we walk there to keep everything locked in.
Well, absolutely. And I think particularly as it relates to salaries, right? There's, there's an increase for existing employees. But there's also what does the overall employee base look like? And I think as we think about what fall looks like, might we need more social workers? Might we need, you know, might we need more interventions? Might we return certain people to the classroom? So I think until we have a better sense of, of what that looks like, you know, and it's hard because there is that, that increase on the base, but there's also what does the overall employee base looks like? And so you'll see on the open item lists, that's kind of one of the big items is, you know, how do we think we're going to return? What do we think we're going to look like, you know, kind of over time to put that factors into it too, right? Because there's only so many dollars to go around. And so we've got to balance kind of where those dollars, where those dollars go from a resource perspective.
Well, I think this will help us see that on a more type of basis.
Yeah. And like I said, I, I think, I feel really good. I mean, there's, there's still open items, you know, as you'll see, but I've been talking to my counterparts and some people haven't even presented any five-year projections yet, just because of the uncertainty. So we wanted to at least get this kind of first look. And then we can continue to have the dialogue and then continue to refine, you know, enhancements. And then you'll see on the open items list, I mean, there's some probably good news on the open items. There's some that might be challenging news and we can kind of go through that. But we're trying to make it as balanced as possible right now. But again, well, I definitely want to share with you kind of what, what things are still open and what things we're still kind of looking at or looking about. Different stuff.
So yeah, that's to be very helpful.
So quickly, just from an open item perspective, we talked, we talked earlier about kind of the COVID-related grants. There's a, yeah, you have, it's, it should be the back page and what you have. So we kind of got a revenue section and an expense section. But the COVID grants, we've got the digital design grant that we spoke about earlier that we're working with Ryan on. And that's worth up to $372,000. And again, we've got some flexibility right now. That's not in our current budget and that's not in the projections because we've got the flexibility as to where we want to fit those spots. And we will certainly find a way to spend, to spend that all then as to when do we want to do that. The CARES money, the 262, that is already in our FY21 budget. So that number's not incremental, but I just kind of put it out there as a point of reference for the, for the group. And then CARES 2, we talked about kind of that supplemental CARES grant. We've seen numbers in the range of 600 to kind of the 981 that you see. So that, that number, we don't, we don't have a final number yet. And that number's not currently in our numbers. So that would be outside to the current projection. Title grants, like some of the grants we left flat for right now because we just don't have any visibility. So we've just kind of left them flat. They could go up or down, probably not going to be a material change. Transportation, we talked about a little bit. The revenue will follow the expense. So right now they're aligned with each other. But as we change the transportation expense that we think we're going to move that up or down based on what our model looks like next year, then the revenue will change, you know, kind of on a percentage basis. Food service, again, we talked about that, that's really going to follow once we know what the fall looks like. Land cash fees, just wanted to highlight those. This is about $183,000 that we have in King County. And we've got the ability to access these funds for capital improvement projects when we want to. So they sort of keep that, they hold that for us on like transition fees that we get kind of on an annual basis. So we wanted to make sure to kind of highlight those that as we look at our capital plan and funding and what we want to do there, that we do have that source of income that's not currently in our numbers. Because again, there's, there's no requirements to what year we need to, we need to use those funds. And I did want to highlight just property tax freeze. That's always, you know, kind of been on the table and it kind of comes back and forth. And it's just whether or not that's going to happen, that is not currently in our numbers. But that's certainly something that as we come back and refine this, I could do some different modeling for the board as to what that could mean. Because obviously, as we talked about on the salary side, if you start taking that revenue out in year one, that's a comment. And so that's going to very quickly reduce our current revenue assumptions that are in the model. From an expense side, we already talked about kind of transition costs. That's everything associated with what school looks like next year and what we think it might look like in the future. Transportation, we spoke about food service, we talked about COVID expenses. Right now, we have 1.4 million dollars in FY21 incremental for COVID expenses. Those are, that's still in the model. So that may give us some flexibility and we don't need those for COVID on an ongoing basis. We can redeploy those funds and use those to fund, you know, incremental resources. So, so it's nice to know that we've kind of got some things there that we can, we can kind of self-fund with. And then capital spending, again, we talked about, which we worked with DLR, Evolution 15. And trying to decide again how we're going to use some of the working cash flow. So those, you know, those numbers will kind of be, sometimes we determine those once we know what everything else looks like and then we kind of see what we can afford. We definitely have some roofing projects, we want to do some boilers and that type of stuff. And so, you know, we're trying to get on, work with Heather and get on a replacement cycle so that we're kind of smoothing out some of those, some of those expenses. So that's the high level where we are. And I don't know if anybody else has any questions. But again, this, this is something that we'll kind of come back to, you know, pretty regularly. And then obviously, it's, it's fluid. And obviously, the further you go out, the more difficult the projections are, then trying to kind of be consistent with our assumptions. But again, trying to give the board a sense of what that longer-term picture is and what the impacts of decisions we make today might look like a couple of years down the road.
I just want to commend Mindy and Mike and actually all the cabinet members. A great deal of time having discussions. And I don't think we've ever known the detail like Mindy does right now. And it's fun to hear her talking about interventions with social workers. But in seriousness, you know, Mindy is taking her role and, you know, beyond the numbers to hear her think, or to hear her talk as she thinks about what could be next year or where we are going to be for innovation, three years, five years down the road. Really, she should be commended. I mean, really, a lot of work and, but it's asking questions, reflecting, retaining. And Mindy really knows our budget right now. And also, I mean, I think to our board, you know, that we're in a very good shape because of long before many of us were sitting around this and certainly some of you were. Our boards did a wonderful job the last decade, paying attention, asking challenging questions, never falling asleep at the wheel of leadership and direction that is. So we appreciate it. It makes us better. So as we move forward and you have questions or you see areas of uncertainty or what is, please ask them. Because that's how we do continuously monitor, get better. And you go responsibly, which I think this board has always done and certainly this administration has done as well. But thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Schump. And I guess one, one more kudos. I think I, I really do want to thank the cabinet members, the principals. I think as a district, certainly since, since I've been here, I would say at this moment in time, it's sort of the most engaged everybody's been kind of from top to back. So, you know, by having those monthly reports and looking at where we're at and understanding, I think, you know, sometimes we kind of finish a year, but now we're trying to look more globally and saying, well, maybe we're not going to spend money here, but maybe we can redeploy those resources. And so really kind of making that head of full circle and having people engage and, you know, asking, oh, what about this? Or, you know, like if I hear things thinking about, oh, maybe we can fund that, you know, in a, in a different way. So, so I think it's, for me, it's exciting, you know, to see other people kind of engaged in that process because I think it makes the, makes it all matter when we do that. So, so thank you to everyone who's kind of participated in the process.
Thanks for being here. I think this will definitely help us all. So one of the things that he points out to us though, our classic structure, cost, not going to survive. So somewhere along the way, we have to figure out. Which goes back to our instructional models and modalities, which is the reason we really need to know what works best. So we can be aligned with the goal base. All right. Okay, so did we have some resolutions regarding the work with the airshop? So.
Tell me. Just quickly, there's two resolutions coming up. Some of you might remember that historically, when Dean was here, he had just kind of done a, I'll call it an, an ongoing resolution. And so we didn't necessarily approve those resolutions on an annual basis. And when we talked to the auditors last year, they said what we were doing was fine, but that it could be even more transparent if we actually did the resolution on an annual basis. So the one resolution is just for our typical money that we move. And that's money to the capital projects fund to fund capital projects. And then money to the debt service fund to fund technology leases. And then the second resolution, that's the one-time resolution for this year, is to abate the working cash funds to the capital fund. So back in December, we issued those working cash funds. And from a structural perspective, we've got to move that money from working cash to O and M to capital. So it's more just a structural type thing, but we do need official resolutions to move those monies. We have to follow up the county rules.
So just as a detail issue, wouldn't yet, the actual printout of these.
Yeah.
Pretty specific about who's supposed to be here.
I'm good.
So.
We talked about that.
What can we still?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm, I'm going to confirm, Dr. Schump pointed that out to me before today. Typically, they've modified, they've modified those to allow for, you know, kind of remote attendance and approvals. So I will confirm, Mary sent a message out, but I'll, but I'll confirm that we kind of changed that one piece of language to allow for the remote approval.
Did you even pass this side of the room?
I know. I'm impressed. You guys are on it today.
Yeah. So, so then we just need to pass this resolution. And so.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of abating the working cash fund of community unit school, just the 115, Kendall and King County, Illinois, as presented.
Okay, so there is, I still think we should do a little.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. A second.
Mr. Kapelitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Sopner?
Yes.
Miss Hiel?
Yes.
All right, yes, so we have two of these. So we have a second motion to base.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing accounting transfers to capital projects and debt service funds as presented.
Second.
Mr. Kapelitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sopner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
And Miss Hiel?
Yes.
All right, so motion P S. So now we have a review of executive session minutes and I'm sure everybody is looking at these. They've been an interesting reading, I will say. Yeah, but they don't. So there's, there's a motion and, and as you hear, we have hopefully everything agreeing with the win. So first let's get it on the table.
Motion to approve the opening of the executive session minutes as listed below and for the following executive session minutes to remain closed. April seventh, nineteen eighty-two, May tenth, nineteen eighty-two, May twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-two, February fourteenth, nineteen eighty-four, and January fourteenth, nineteen eighty-five.
You get a second?
Second.
All right, so I think we have to, we have to. So.
Mr. Kapelitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sopner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
And Miss Hiel?
Yes.
All right, so that motion P S also. Yeah, now we are going to, this is something we discussed at the last meeting. So this is the current development course guide.
I guess this is a, an item we're seeking approval of tonight. Dr. Berz, if all activity made a suggestion to add additional hyperlinks that will allow for interior modifications because of the validity of our situation right now. So those were added. And also, I would remind the board that starting this week, our middle school administrative team will be posting our seven, writing seventh graders.
Great.
So. Motion to approve that twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty-two Yorkville Middle School curriculum course guide as presented.
All right. Don't put me down. Hold on, this is all in favor? Oh, wait a second, that's right. All right, it's also like the second motion.
Second.
All right, thank you, Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, P S is. Why are there the four calls? Okay.
These have been out this way since what, December, talked about a few committees and so I'm ready for a people.
Motion to adopt the following board policy as presented.
Second.
Mr. Kapelitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Sopner?
Yes.
And Miss Hiel?
Yes.
Great. So, oh, yeah, I'm just a pervert.
Yeah, just a few things related to vaccination. So we, we have about seventy percent of our staff who was asked to be vaccinated when an opportunity come. There were probably another seventy or eighty staff members who were in share at the time. And probably plus the three hundred who at this point at those, they don't, don't want to be vaccinated. So as of now, we have a hundred and twenty-three of our staff vaccinated. Depending weather tomorrow, we're spoken, we'd have another two hundred and eighty years. And pretty terrible is we have four hundred and three. And if we can get those done tomorrow, now obviously we'll be special. As the board is aware, we moved the region, our vision has moved into phase four. Kind of provide a update for you, if you're interested in reading it. But that does lend itself to the opening up of more opportunities for our kids with extra programs and help products. And so again, I'm very appreciative of the board and your support and advocacy, as well as our staff and all those who contribute to that. And to our community for doing the right things by distancing and masks and everything else that goes along with that. And we are seeking to serve as a mass vaccination site. We met with Teno County Health Department here at the high school, the second time now. Heather and Melinda were with me walking through. And they have started February sixth, Saturday, and then again, March sixth, Saturday, to bring, they're, they're following a soft run of about a thousand individuals of sixty-five and older population. We had the police department, we just really using the, the athletic lobby at the entrance, going to the gym. They did a nice flow to it. And really in preparation for the hope that our county is going to secure a large quantity in the near future. I know our mayor, our police chief, and certainly some of our other officials across the, the county are advocating with the state to get twenty or twenty-five thousand more vaccinations where we could do fully three or four days in a row of mass vaccination at the high school. But this will serve as a great trial run for that. But I just want to again compliment the county. They've really done a fantastic job, Brandon, her team, and really everybody, and the police chief, all our local officials, just to be a great support, to be great partners, to work with our, our school district, to get our hard decisions back to you. I'm really, really proud to be part of that family, that you worked with and so. But certainly some good things going on and some brackets we're making. And we will keep the board aware of that. We're also working with our attorneys along the last season. On the, really the recommendations, Dr. Katula, as athletes and students come back to activities, making sure that we have things in place for those students who have been positive COVID and now participating. We can ensure we have the correct vaccination needs from medical physicians, medical professionals to, for the child safety and. Any questions related to that, the vaccinations and school's role in it?
I just like they add that the health department, I don't know if people realize the limited resources they have to work with and what they've been able to accomplish. I mean, a lot of time after they put it in this cell. In coronation with everyone involved, I, I just can't say enough about the, how it all gets done.
And really, you know, our, our nurses have helped at the, the Teno County for their vaccination. Kathy's been given out the daily week to go over there to help. And our nurses here have done a fantastic job of this as well. Melinda, who's our district resident nurse, although she's not probably certified in it, she's just been a rat. With all the quarantines, with all the, the staff coordination of Detroit, the vaccinations and Brooklyn Health Department. Are really very fortunate, it's been a great team of us. So hopefully, credit days continue to come. And then tomorrow, as the board is aware, you're going to have a remote planning day for employees in, in the district. Our students will have a non, non-attendance day. We will not make this day up as far as one of the remote meetings that the state granted us this year. Those teachers will have an opportunity to plan, to collaborate, to freshen development, but flexibly at location and by their choice. And so just so that's going out, we look to be back in session, assuming on Wednesday. And I apologize in advance if the model soon doesn't come as you're predicting. But again, as a superintendent, I also urge you to look out for, you know, the, the safety of our staff that's driving our buses, their own rooms. I'm not always going to get it right, but we do take every effort to.
I bet she's here and decided question then.
Yeah. I'd hate to do what back and say that we should be a different decision.
I think that covers a lot. So our, our next meeting is getting is February eighth. Yeah, our next meeting is February twenty-second. And there's anything else to bring before the board?
No, but I'm making motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
There you go, the second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Right. We are adjourned. You say everybody.